I'm reaching out to Kelly, everybody right now. He was talking earlier, he was gonna be traveling. He was gonna try to pull off somewhere. Get on, so I'm trying to get ahold of him, just to make sure he's trying to get on. Bear with me a moment. Looks like he's having a little trouble getting on. He's trying to reboot and trying to restart and do it again. So we'll give him another minute here. In the event that we can't get on there, we'll have to, we'll have to get moving forward with the meeting and Vice Chairman, I think O'Neil?
Yeah.
Yes. We'll have to, we'll have to get you initiated to run the meeting.
We all knew this day would come.
Yeah. Let's give it another minute and see if we can get Kelly on or not, but I'm gonna go back on mute and I'll check and I'll be right back.
Thank God.
Don't be thanking anybody yet, Tim.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you. Can you hear us, Kelly? All right, we see you in.
Can you hear me, Ray?
We see you in here. Can you hear us?
So I take it you can't hear me, correct?
No, we can hear you now, loud and clear. Hello.
Hey, I take it you can't hear me at all, correct?
No, we can hear you, Billy. Can you hear me? Okay, unmute yourself. Like, we can't hear you now. Unmute you.
All right, can you hear me now?
I just hung up the phone, we can't hear you.
Okay. Well, good deal. So, hang on a minute. Okay. Tell you what, it is, used to be able to get out of one of these meetings once in a while, but now with Zoom, I can't, there's no way I can get out of it.
You're trapped.
Yeah, I guess. So, well, sorry I'm late.
Sure, hey, Ray, we have, we have someone in the meeting that I'm not sure who that is. Who is Pete O?
Can you, can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Hi, Peter Olazur, I'm actually the developer for Midwest V for the site plan review.
Okay, great.
He's my engineer.
Okay, great. Well, we'll go ahead. If you could just mute yourself, we'll get back to you when it comes up on the agenda. Then, thank you.
All right. So, six minutes after seven, so I'm assuming I can call the meeting to order now.
You betcha.
And we're gonna need a roll call vote, and I guess you want to know physical location, correct, from everybody?
Yep, whether you're here present and then your physical location.
Okay, so.
Ray will call that. Commissioner Bean?
Uh, here, St. John's.
Commissioner O'Neil?
City of Mount Pleasant.
Commissioner Campbell?
Broomfield Township.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Vogel?
Denver Township, Rosebush, Michigan.
Commissioner Silker?
Isabella Township. Isabella, Gilmore Township, Isabella County, Michigan.
Commissioner Horton?
Rodney, Michigan, Costa, excuse me, Rodney, Michigan, McCosta County.
Commissioner Neyer?
Lincoln Township, Shepherd, Michigan.
And Commissioner Rogers, could you state your location again, please? Not hearing you. There's something wrong with your, with your, with your speaker. We're not hearing you at all.
I'm in Vernon Township.
There we go.
Got it.
Thank you. Can you hear?
Vernon Township.
Yep, got it.
At everybody?
Yep, that's everyone.
Okay. All right, if we could stand now for the pledge allegiance, please?
Fledge allegiance?
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
All right, like to welcome everybody to the meeting. So, just, just as a reminder, this will be recorded and it is being streamed on YouTube. We're gonna have a recording, or excuse me, roll call votes for every vote, as we've been doing since, for all the Zoom meetings. And I guess just kind of be patient. So, we have agenda in front of us. Look it over, are there any additions to this agenda? By staff? There you go. All good? Okay. I would entertain a vote, okay, entertain a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved, Neyer.
Second.
Second. Okay, Ray, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Horton?
Yes.
Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Commissioner Neyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Silker?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Appears Mr. Rogers may have audio issues. Maybe video too, it looks like he might be frozen up in his video.
Yes.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Hey, Nathan, before we move forward, since you're having a little trouble there, on our end, we're having trouble hearing you. Maybe if you turn off your video and just work on the audio side of it?
Yeah.
That might help our reception of your audio.
Sorry.
Give that a try. Can you hear us?
Can, can you hear me now?
I'm, yep.
Yep.
Okay, we can move forward, Cameron, sorry about that.
All right.
I'm trying to log in on another one.
All right. So, we had, we covered everybody for the.
That's correct. The vote to approve the agenda was eight to zero.
Okay. All right, so moving along to the minutes from last month's meeting. Does anybody have any changes that they'd like to see, or questions about minutes from last month? If there are none, we need a motion to approve, as submitted.
So, we approved the minutes as read?
Good.
Stuck in by Vogel.
Okay, need a roll call vote, Ray?
All right, Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Silker?
Yes.
Commissioner Neyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Commissioner Horton?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight to zero, affirmative?
Okay. Liaison report, ZBA, Mr. Vogel.
ZBA. Very rare. Okay, we met on the 18th at nine o'clock by way of Zoom. We had two variances, twenty dash oh six in Nadua Township, and that passed four to zero. And we also had variance twenty oh seven in Nadua Township as well, and it passed four to zero. And that was it.
All right, thank you. Parks and Rec, are you back to going to meetings yet, Tim, or?
No, next month will be, I'll be back next month.
Okay, all right. And Board of Commissioners?
Board of Commissioners wrapping up the year 2020. And we're going to be losing our chairperson, Chairman Green, he decided not to run again. So he will, Mr. Terry Hutchinson is gonna be taking his spot on the board. The board, I think two meetings ago, approved the planning commission's approval for a zoning change that went forward, so. And as far as 2021 goes, obviously, big, big items on our agenda is the county jail. As far as that, I've got really nothing new to add, unfortunately, between our last meeting. It's kind of moving a little slower than I anticipated. I do anticipate, though, that picking up speed, so I, the next board report, should probably have some more pertinent information as far as the jail, at least get you a better update on it, so. That's all I got for tonight, gentlemen and lady, Ms. Silker.
Thank you. So, next agenda, township concerns, so I don't know, is there any, any township representatives listening and have any concerns?
Yeah, I will, I will indicate that I believe Jackie Curtis is on watching again this month. She did get, contact us and let us know that everything was fine in Denver Township.
Okay, good to know. Okay. Okay, now this brings us to the public comment section of the meeting. How, normally this is for, for cup, for public comments, for things that aren't on the agenda, down on, down on the agenda. But there is a, the issue with the, one of the site plan review that's coming up, which is not a public hearing, so if you're, if you're here to make a comment about the site plan review that will be coming up on down the agenda, this is the time for you to, to, to make your comment. So if there's anybody that would, has a comment, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ray, you press star nine on your phone, and that raises your, kind of raises your hand to Ray, and then he'll let you into the, to the meeting. If you would, state your name, please, and, and then make your comment.
We have a raised hand from the phone number with the last three digits of seven eight zero, seven eight zero. You can make your comment, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening, this is Tim Wolf calling from Lake Isabella, Michigan. I submitted a letter in opposition to the proposed site plan noting several deficiencies with the proposed project based on the ordinance requirements for the county. The one thing that I would like to stress when it comes to offering any leniencies in terms of the drawings and materials submitted, you're not dealing with a small business mom and pop operation that's trying to, to do something of that nature. You're dealing with professional developers that were unable to meet your own ordinance requirements for what is required to be submitted in the drawing. Additionally, my letter addressed concerns with the fact that the county ordinance really does not have any segregation for their commercial uses. You have one large basket of commercial uses that doesn't really delineate with the intensity of those uses. And I would like to encourage the planning commission to go back and look at your ordinance and potentially come up with a C1, a C2 zoning differential to really look at what are low intensity uses versus high intensity uses. The only real C2 thing that you've done is you've got the, the fairgrounds kind of as its own thing. But when it comes to dealing with the, the broad spectrum of commercial uses that you will see out county, your ordinance, I think, really should address, you know, these are things that would have a low impact on adjoining residential uses or adjacent residential uses versus things that would be, you know, frankly, more intensive and more offensive to live next to as the seller general would be. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wolf. All right, any other comments?
I guess caller with the last three digits eight, seven, five, eight, seven, five in your phone number, last three digits. You can unmute yourself by pressing star six. Ray, can we have the last caller? Can you mute them, or just have to mute this? There we go.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, sure can.
Yes.
Okay, my name's Teresa Tad. I, my husband and I live in the house next to the proposal site. Um, I guess we just had a few concerns after looking over the map as well. Um, obviously, it butts right up to our property, which I know we're surrounded by commercials. Nothing we can do about that. Um, but I just had a question after looking at the key. If, you know, if we have requested changes, potential changes to the, the fencing between our property and the proposed property, when would we bring that up?
Well.
Tim?
Yeah, so, so this is the time for public comment, so what, this would be the time for you to raise your concerns or make your comments. There isn't a, you know, a time really in the meeting for you to, like, negotiate out what type of fence necessarily would be going up. But if you would state, you know, what you're looking for, what your, what your concerns are, and why, and what you would like to see, this is the time to do that.
Okay, um, well, on the key, it has a six foot wooden fence going up, and I would just request either a six or eight foot vinyl fence. Just for not only noise control, but any trash that would be coming over from the, you know, just blowing trash coming over. We also have a five month old who's gonna be start, you know, start walking, so just for safety reasons as well. Our privacy for our backyard, those, those are the main reasons, safety and privacy. And then the maintenance of a wood fence. You know, we, that's the last thing I want to do is maintain a wood fence. So those, those three things.
Okay, so the, I, so you said three things, so the wood fence, or was there, was there two?
Maintenance, safety and.
Okay, all right, that, that reason for the fence, got it, okay, perfect.
Yeah, yeah. And requesting a vinyl fence versus wooden because of the maintenance of it.
Yep, okay, got it. All right. Thank you very much.
That's all. Thank you.
All right, thanks, you're welcome. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, there were no other hands raised at this point in time.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Harold Banks, I'm the owner of Good Times Country Store here on M20 in Mount Pleasant, over in Isabella County. I have a couple of questions. Why now? I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Have you taken into any consideration the impact this has on small businesses like ours? I mean, we just started out. We haven't gotten any help, I mean, I'm not here to whine, but we haven't gotten any help from the government whatsoever. This type of business that comes in here, this close to us, we have one literally four miles down the road. We have another one in Remus. We don't need another one right here. What happened to taking a small community and keeping it small? This type of business will put a business like ours out of business. I don't know how to unmute.
Yep. Oh, I, this is, I hear your concern, all right, appreciate that. I don't have, I don't, I don't have anything to address as far as why now, this is when the permit comes before the planning commission. That's, that's, I guess, my answer to that. I don't know if anybody has anything to add, but. So, Gerald, I duly noted.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other public that are raising their hands on the call.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll close the public meeting, or excuse me, the public comment portion of the meeting, and move on to agenda item eight, the public hearing for special use permit two dash oh nine.
Yeah, so you have special use permit number twenty dash oh nine in front of you. The applicant and property owner is Aiden Weaver. Aiden's in Rollin Township, section thirty-five, at seventy-seven eighty-four West Remick Road. Aiden is requesting an application to establish a rural production and processing facility to construct pallets. The site area is approximately thirty-five acres in size, and it's in the agricultural buffer district. Mr. Weaver has worked with staff over the past several months to get a complete site plan in on November thirteenth of this year. He provided us with a complete application, which includes section twelve oh three, or comments on section twelve oh three, general requirements for special land uses, comments on sections twelve oh five KK stating compliance with and agreeing to comply with ordinance requirements for rural production and processing facilities. The applicant is proposing to operate a rural production and processing facility to construct pallets from raw materials. Mr. Weaver is looking at utilizing an existing building or half of an existing building. The building is forty by sixty, he'll be utilizing thirty by forty of that, approximately twelve hundred square feet, much less than the maximum allowed for rural production and processing. The agricultural building was, is already existing. Mr. Weaver has provided us with some comments in sections twelve oh five KK where staff had some comments and some concerns. We, we contacted him. For example, section twelve oh three E, he made a comment that the facility will be opened to the public. We had concerns that that would be a storefront, that's not what the rural production and processing facilities are about. We did contact him and, and he indicated it's not gonna have a storefront. It's gonna be open so that people can come and pick up the pallets and drop off, and you'll have a contract as, as required under the rural production and processing facility. Section is twelve oh three. E, he also stated lumber will be coming from two different sawmills. Mr. Weaver has indicated that the lumber will be delivered to him via a pickup truck and a trailer, and it'll be coming to him one or two times per week. Under twelve oh five KK five, he indicated there'll be no contracted sales of items produced on site. Again, I think he was kind of the public in the contracted sales, he had those kind of roles reversed. He does have a contract to produce pallets for somebody, so he'll be receiving materials, building pallets, and he does have a contract as allowed and required in the, in the ordinance under twelve oh five KK five. Twelve oh five KK eight requires screening along property lines where there's adjacent residential uses. Staff has taken a look at the property and has indicated that there is no, you know, there's a lot of topography out there, and there's no additional screening from what is currently there that would be required by staff. Mr. Weaver has also included his waste disposal plan, which he indicates that the waste would be utilized, you know, there'd be minimal waste, and any waste that there is would be utilized to heat water and to heat the home on the property, and we have included some language towards the end of your staff report with regard to conditions about open burning, that we'll get to in a minute. In your staff report, you have the language from the ordinance with regard to section twelve oh three, general requirements for special land uses, as well as sections twelve oh five KK rural production and processing facilities. Excuse me. In summary, upon our review of the application, everything appears to be, and the clarifications of which we made, everything seems to be in line with our ordinance and complete. Staff has provided the planning commission with a checklist for your review. We do have three stipulations or conditions in which we're requesting, if you move forward with this application, that we would ask that you include, and I will read them for the record. The first one is the applicant shall provide a copy of the driveway permit for approval or approval of the existing driveway from the Isabella County Road Commission for this use. Number two, existing screening should be maintained, and the applicant shall comply with all requirements of sections twelve oh five KK rural production and processing facilities. And number three, the applicant's waste disposal plan as described in the application is approved by the planning commission, and there will be, shall be no open burning of waste materials. Staff has prepared notices posted this in the morning sun, and, and in accordance with state law and the ordinance. As of this date, we have had no correspondence for or against the request, and that's all that we have at this time.
Okay. Sir, Mr. Weaver, or somebody representing Mr. Weaver, do you have anything you'd like to add to the, to the staff comments?
Mr. Weaver, if you are on the call, if you could press star six on your phone to unmute yourself? Mr. Weaver, is that you with the last four, last three digits of your phone number, four nine five?
Yeah.
Yes, hi, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, Mr. Weaver, this would be the point in. Yes, hi, Mr. Weaver, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, Mr. Weaver, this would be the point in time that you can make comment on your application or add anything that Mr. Newport had in his staff report.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, yep, sure can.
For a while, all I know, it, everything sounds, sounds good to me.
Okay, so, so he didn't, Tim didn't leave anything out, right?
Not that I can think of.
All right, good, good. Okay. Well. All right, at this point. Okay, at this point, we can open the meeting up for public comment. So if anybody has comments regarding this particular special use permit, please press star, star nine on your phone.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand that is on the call.
Okay. All right, well, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting now. So. Give me a minute here. So, I guess, at this point, we need a motion to begin some discussion.
I move to approve special use permit twenty dash oh nine as submitted by Arden Weaver to establish a rural production and processing facility in the agricultural buffer AG three district, and shall further be conditioned upon the following. One, the applicant shall provide a copy of the driveway permit or approval of the existing driveway from the Isabella County Road Commission for this use. Two, existing screening shall be maintained, and the applicant shall comply with all requirements of section twelve point oh five KK rural production and processing facilities. And three, the applicant's waste disposal plan, as described in the application, is approved by the planning commission, and, and, and there shall be no open burning of waste material.
Nair, second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Now, so we've got the two, the twelve oh three and the twelve oh five KK have the stipulations, the general requirements for this special land use permit. Are there any comments or questions from anybody that, any commissioners that thinks, think this may not be, may not be met? Or are there any, any concerns? Yes, Mr.?
Excuse me, chair, wrong, wrong, wrong committee, Chair, Chairman Bean. I just had a couple of questions, I think this piggybacks on some of our last questions we had in a previous special use permit, I believe. But questions in regards to the burning of waste material. What kind of lumber will be used, is it, is it treated lumber, or is it raw lumber? I think that has an issue with as far as burning goes, I think in, in the motion, it says open burning. I'd have a little bit more problem if it was, obviously, if they're clothes burning, using inside their house, or could be putting it into a furnace of some sort, or something like that, but that could still be burning treated lumber, I think that could put off some noxious fumes and or dangerous fumes. I don't know, and looking at this, I was trying to see what kind of lumber, is it gonna be raw lumber, or is it gonna be treated lumber? Because I would like to, if it's treated lumber, I think that could be more cause for concern versus raw lumber, if I'm using the proper term with raw lumber.
Commissioner Horton, I do believe that this is raw rough sawn lumber used for pallets, and that wood is typically not treated lumber.
Is there a way we can put a stipulation that if it is treated, it cannot be burned? Regardless if it's open or closed, is that possible, is that even possible to do to people? I mean. I think Commissioner Rogers, yeah, I think Commissioner Rogers brought that up, and if I'm remembering right, it's all these boards and evenings and everything go together.
No, you're, you're correct.
I think he brought that up in our last, I think that's very important, if that's one of the conditions, because that is in, let's see, you can argue that would be a condition.
So, so.
Three D.
So burning treated lumber in a, in an, in an enclosed, you know, like.
Either way, I would say.
An outdoor, an outdoor furnaces.
I would say no burning of treated lumber, because the number three in our, in our, in the motion, it said there should be no open burning of waste material. I would go further and put no burning of treated lumber, period, or some language to that effect. I think we amended it or something like that last time, if I recall, again.
Yeah, we, we did, we did make an amendment, I believe Commissioner Rogers had made an amendment to include that. I believe that came from the storage sheds, because sometimes those storage sheds that are in contact with the ground are gonna have treated lumber, and they did indicate that they would be using treated lumber. Maybe it's best that we ask the applicant if any of the lumber that would be used in his operation will be treated, and that may resolve the issue.
So, so is it, is it illegal to burn treated lumber in an enclosed system? Or is it just illegal to burn treated lumber, period? I mean, we can't make a stipulation of something that isn't illegal, can we? That's.
Well, we can make a stipulation that they don't burn it, whether it's legal or illegal, and I do not know the answer to either, to that question, whether it is legal or not legal to burn treated lumber. It does sound like the open burning of treated lumber, I recall from the conversation last month, was they were fined, or there was contractors that were in trouble for it, if I recall the conversation. So, you know, I, I'm not sure there's treated lumber being used in the operation, so it might be a mute point. Or if, even if it is a mute point, if we put it in, and he's not using it, it won't hurt anything, so.
Myself personally, I think as far as a legal component goes, I would like to see it in. And only because it falls under, when we, when we, in our part of our twelve oh three, we have detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare, and one of it was smoke or odor. I think smoke obviously is in, but I think we can say that just smoke doesn't necessarily, runs for grab, but odor or fumes of treated lumber, I think could be an issue, so I would like to see it in, same as we've had before, we're not asking anything out of the order. And as Tim said, if he's not using it, it's a moot point, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Do we know, again, it probably doesn't make too big of a difference, but what size of trucks, I know, delivery trucks, is there a standard size as far as length of trucks, size of trucks, weight of trucks, does anybody, do they, do they specify, do we have to have a specification on it?
They did indicate to us that they would be pickup truck with trailer.
Okay. Again, I don't know if that's something, I don't, you know, so.
I don't, I don't think, Jim, it's anything different than what probably is going down some of these ag roads.
Okay, yeah, I agree. So I'm more concerned with just staying consistent as far as burning up, again, I, you know, you know, you're, the old saying is you don't want to burn treated, so, that's my understanding anyway, so.
Yeah, when we finish up our discussion, if, if, you know, this would be my suggestion, when we finish up the discussion on this, if that's something that would like to go in, again, we can make a motion to amend, to include that, get a second, have a vote on that, whether or not we put the amendment in or not. So we can finish up our discussion, that way maybe there might be multiple amendments.
So, so any, so right now, we're still dealing with the original amendment, so any more questions regarding the original amendment? Okay, if there are none, Ray, if we could do a vote, please.
Well, we don't have a motion or a second on that.
Well, I thought we had, I thought we had to finish the first, and then come back to the second.
No, we, so we have an action on the table, we have a motion to approve on the table, but now we're amending that motion to approve, so we gotta, if there's no further discussion on the application as a whole, then we would make a motion to amend, to include under number three, and shall not burn any treated lumber.
Okay.
Would like to make that motion to amend, to say that.
So, are you saying, Tim, that you're going to put it as number four, an additional condition?
Uh, no, that would be added to the, to, to condition three.
Well, the condition three says the applicant's waste disposal plan, as described in the application, is approved by the planning commission, and there shall be no open burning of waste material. In his waste disposal plan, did he say there would be no open burning of waste material?
Nope, that is correct, so if we're going to use number three as it sits, his, his, his waste disposal plan did not include that, so we would just add a number four here, that indicates there shall be no burning of, 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 of treated lumber.
I would like to make that motion then, as a number four, that there will be no burning of treated lumber, period.
All right, is there a second?
Nair, second.
Okay, now we can.
So now you'll vote on the amendment to add that.
Okay. Excuse me. Ray?
Commissioner Silker?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Commissioner Nair?
Yes.
Commissioner Horton?
I think I got lost, but if I got asked, yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Motion passed seven one. So Commissioner Bean, you still have on the table now the original motion with the amendments to include that fourth condition.
Okay. So, this point, if there's no other comments regarding this, we'll have a vote.
Commissioner Horton?
Yes.
Commissioner Nair?
Yes.
Commissioner Silker?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay. Okay, moving to agenda item number nine, site plan review twenty dash one seven, the retail building.
Yeah, let me, um, change gears here really quick, there we go. So we have site plan review number twenty dash one seven, applicant is Midwest V LLC and LISC LLC. They're in Broomfield Township, section one, located on South Coldwater Road. I do believe the address that was given to us, that we've given to you, as seventeen fifty-two is an incorrect address, we'll need to get that, that fixed. The applicant has submitted a site plan for a retail building, it's approximately a two-and-a-half acre plus or minus site, and it is a district that allows for commercial retail. A lot in which the applicant has submitted, site plan review is primarily a vacant lot, except for a mini storage building towards the southern half, which the applicant has proposed to demolish and remove. There is a residential use to the north of the property, and a non-residential use to the south of the property, with farm fields both to the east and to the west across the road. The, sorry, the site plan review application was received on November eighteenth, and includes section eleven oh six. Comments on section eleven oh six, standards for site plan review, and several detailed site plans and documents showing compliance with the Isabella County zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking to get approval to construct a nine thousand one hundred and eighteen square foot retail building with an associated paved parking area. The applicant has indicated that they have applied for their well and septic with the Health Department, and have applied to the Road Commission for driveway permitting. The submitted site plan application location shows the retail building dumpster screening, proposed parking lot, parking lot landscaping, and stormwater retention. The applicant is requesting the planning commission to approve, the planning commission to approve under section seven oh seven C, a reduction in parking. Normal parking required on the site is, for that size structure, is forty. Parking spaces are looking to come down to thirty parking spaces. That section of the ordinance, seven oh seven C, does give the planning commission the ability to approve the reduction. To, to, since the property is bound to the north by residential use, minimum standards in the ordinance require screening between the road, driveway, I'm sorry, and the parking areas. The applicant has proposed a six-foot high privacy fence along the property line to meet the requirement of section seven oh seven I four in the ordinance. And I believe in the site plan that is a wooden fence, just for reference to the comment you heard earlier. The applicant is not currently proposing a sign that was not on the site plan anywhere. Staff did reach out to the applicant, they indicated that they understood that in the future, when they were to be placing signs either on the building or anywhere on location, that they would need to come back in for a permit to comply with the requirements of the ordinance. In your staff report, you have copies of section eleven oh six standards for site plan review. You also have the section seven oh seven off-street parking and loading, so that you can see where the planning commission may vary the parking requirements for this article, and make that modification if you so choose. In summary here, staff has reviewed the application, sent you the site plan checklist, and proposed at least one condition here, possibly two, and we have a couple others, I think, that I want to discuss with you when I finish with my staff report here. The first condition would be the applicant shall provide a copy of all required permits from the special Michigan District Health, Health Department and the Isabella County Road Commission. The second one would be whether or not you're going to approve the parking reduction. If you approve the parking reduction, then we would need a, a condition that indicates that this planning commission under that section has gone ahead and approved their requested parking reduction. If you do not, while they do show on the plan where those parking spaces would be located, staff would ask that we ask for an amended site plan to include all forty parking spaces if you were not to approve their request to reduce the, the number of parking spaces. So as you all are aware, you have received, I believe, in the last couple, two or three days, correspondence emails from Ray and/or I. We received eleven, I think, total of eleven emails that were in opposition to the, to the request, and one that was in favor of the request. For the most part, there were only two of those that had any substantive information that was pointed out, other than that they didn't want it because of the road, whether, I think we had one that said there was too much traffic on the road, we had another one that said there was not enough traffic for this kind of use to go in. So you've received all of those in the last couple days by email from our office. There were a couple that Mr. Wolf had, who spoke earlier, had pointed out in his letter, and I wanted to kind of talk about those quickly. He indicated that there were two areas, hold on one second. There were two, two concerns that he really had, and one was there was insufficient information on the application for you to move forward, and then he had some comments or opinions related to the review standards. I want to address and take a look at the insufficient application information. So he listed in his, in his letter that the applicant, that the ordinance under eleven oh four requires that the applicant provide all structures that are within a hundred feet of the proposed property, or the proposed, let me see, let me see exactly how it reads here. Location and height of all existing and proposed structures on and within one hundred feet of the subject property's boundaries. So we do believe that there are some, a couple of buildings, we did point out to you in our staff report. Typically, we give you orthophotography and photography that has those. I know that we haven't always included those in our previous staff reports, I mean, in our previous applications. Section eleven oh four does, does give the ability of the planning commission to waive that requirement. But if there are concerns, and we do want those buildings located on the application or on the site plan itself, staff would suggest including another condition that would require the applicant, if this were to be approved, require the applicant to provide us with an amended site plan that shows where those structures are and their heights. Additionally, in Mr. Wolf's comments and letter, he pointed out the, that there were no signs. Additionally, um, in Mr. Wolf's, uh, comments and letter, um, he pointed out the, uh, that there were no signs or exterior lighting, um, uh, like parking lot lighting, uh, indicated on the plans, um, that is correct. There, there is none currently. There is something that he did see in the plan that, um, may have slipped past staff here that there is some conduit. It's on page C one point two. It shows an item five one under conduit and it talks about a two-inch electrical conduit to the sign. So we would suspect that the location of the sign would be somewhere there on the north side of that driveway. And, uh, but currently, um, we have communicated with the applicant, I believe Ray did, and, um, we, they, they understand that to, to, to place signs out there that they would need to come back and apply for a zoning permit and comply with the ordinance requirements. So that's one piece of it because they don't have signs on there now. Um, but I have a little bit of a concern with us going on the north side of that driveway, being so close to the property of a residential use. And so I would be suggesting that the planning commission consider, um, uh, conditioning the, the, uh, location of the sign to be on the south side. If there's a freestanding or monument style sign, whatever's a permitted and approved, that it would be located on the south side of the driveway, not on the north side of the driveway. Um, additionally, um, in Mr. Wolf's letter, he talked about, uh, on, uh, page, uh, labeled C one point two, uh, site lighting under seven one. Uh, it looks like, um, we did a little cutting and pasting here because we put in Broomfield Township for the lighting requirement there. Um, and I think that should probably be modified as well, um, to include, uh, or to show that it's Isabella County's ordinance and the compliance to any lighting that would come down the road would be to Isabella County in that Broomfield Township because they don't have their own zoning ordinance. Mr. Wolf, uh, further under the insufficient application information, uh, indicates that, uh, uh, some information about the, the parking, which we already discussed or I already talked about, um, that you do have the right to reduce that if you choose to. He also talked a little bit about the retention pond. The county does not currently have any, um, uh, uh, storm water retention, uh, plans or policies. Um, so therefore we would trust that they would not be shedding water to other properties. And you could, if you so chose to, um, recommend that they communicate with the, uh, Isabella County Drain Commission to see if there's any requirements that they need to, to meet there. Other than that, that really kind of covered the, uh, insufficient application information. So, uh, staff here does not believe that that insufficient application information does not warrant you in moving forward in any way with this. And I just wanted to provide that clarification, um, but, but we would suggest that, that we get amended site plan if you're moving forward to make an approval, that we would have an amended site plan here, um, to include those items in which I just discussed. Other than that, I believe that's all that staff currently, currently has. Again, I would remind you that, um, much of the communication that you have received, um, was with regard to a single, um, uh, you, uh, user or entity, uh, a Dollar General, um, the applicant has not indicated that to us nor in the application. Um, they're, they're requesting to put in a retail facility, whether it's that use or some other use, uh, or that, that, uh, uh, a business or some other business, the, the request is for a retail use at this time. That's all staff has.
All right. Thanks, Tim. Sure. A representative from Midwest V LLC that would like to comment on any of this.
Hi, uh, Peter Olazuk, I'm, uh, with Midwest V. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Um, I just, uh, obviously I've been on and kind of heard our, um, our resident to the north's comments. So certainly in regards to the vinyl fence, I'm more than happy to just make the amendment to the plan and re-submit that to staff and show vinyl fence there. Uh, will be six foot, uh, and we'll do something like an almond tan color, just so that it, uh, it kind of shows well and it, it doesn't kind of show the age for what it is. So, uh, in regards to the lighting in the comments, all of our lighting is night sky compliant, so it's all downward lighting and it is on a, a kind of a sensor. So that, uh, that's something that's, that's not a concern either. And it sounds like my engineer was a wee bit proactive when it comes to showing conduit, uh, without actually applying for the, um, sign, which is something we do not do. That is a third-party handling, so we don't want to confuse kind of what we're, uh, what we're proceeding with and what we're pursuing in regards to the site plan application. I know my engineer, I believe, is on the call, but I think as he put it to me, he's double zooming tonight, so.
I am here.
Oh, there we go. Perfect. So.
I'm here. I think you throw me under the bus too, by the way.
So, but, uh, you know, in today's day and age, you gotta be proactive, I guess, so in, in acting in multiple fronts. But, um, Scott, I didn't know if you had any comments in regards to anything in, in relationship to the site plan.
Absolutely. Um, I do want to clarify on the structures and heights. I definitely can take care of that. Um, and we just trimmed our plan down and, and, uh, realized that we had to get that. So I can easily get that information, um, handled and, and work with staff to get that revised plan in there. And Pete's correct on the sign. I, uh, as far as the, um, uh, the location of the sign, uh, that, that stipulation that was mentioned about putting it in on the south side, the entrance is perfectly fine. Um, but, you know, so I, I don't really feel like that's got to be something that we're going to push against, so we feel that's adequate. Um, to further on Pete's comment about the site lighting, it is building mounted. Site lighting, it's not, we have no pole-mounted site lighting on this site. And, um, uh, I wanted to kind of also just discuss about the, the parking reduction. Our attempt is to, our, our intent is not to supersede the ordinance, but more to just kind of make sure that we're, we're in compliance with, um, with our needs and, uh, but, but as the site dictates, it is large enough, it can handle the additional parking if need be. Uh, it's just additional area that has to be maintained, plowed, uh, again goes to, uh, kind of decreases our, uh, buffers to our neighbors and, um, causes us to have some setback or, um, you know, areas that we would normally have vegetation or grass or something like that have to go to hard surface. Um, our documentation does not show that we need that many parking spaces. And, um, most ordinances that we, um, uh, will, will dictate something closer to thirty anyway. So, uh, I can go on in that. Maybe we can have a side discussion, additional discussion about that, um, uh, independently. But, uh, I think that's about it. I, I do, I have had conversations with road commission. We had submitted in, on November sixth for our application and we're just getting some dialogue back. The guy was on vacation. And, um, so, uh, our, I did send some information to Ray this afternoon, some correspondence from the road commission that they're, um, making some reductions to, or some, they, I think our taper length or something, they said we'll reduce it from a hundred and fifty feet long to a hundred feet long. So we're going through those amendments. We do have a email, uh, from Tracy at the health department and they've been slammed, so she hasn't been able to get the permit issued, but our plans that we have in her, that are in her hands are acceptable. So, uh, we do have that. And then Ray has already issued a solar erosion permit to us, so, but, uh, I'll leave it at that.
Can you talk to the, uh, the, uh, the, um, uh, retention pond itself, since the county really doesn't have a, um, uh, a, a, a retention pond, uh, or retention, uh, 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 plan or ordinance countywide? And I don't believe that the township does either. Can you talk to how you engineered that and what you utilize for engineering that, uh, retention area?
Yes, we used a hundred-year storm event on that and, um, we're even above that in our final volume. We are using, um, we were able to, we, we went bigger because we wanted to kind of bring the site up a little bit anyway. So we're borrowing from our own retention basin. So there's, um, I would say we have more than, well, well, absolutely, we have more than a hundred-year storm event protection for off-site. And the contouring of the site is to the rear, to the, to the, uh, east. So in the rare event that we would get an overflow situation would dissipate and had, had, uh, ease for us according to the contouring.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from Scott or Peter?
If, again, any questions the, the commission might have, please don't hesitate to ask them. We'll, we'll do our best to answer. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So at this point, um, we need a motion and a second to start some discussion. Now, I guess we're back to amendments to, so I guess we get a, we get a motion, initial motion, and then start adding some other amendments in, like we've talked with the vinyl fence and that sort of thing?
You can add that all into the, to the original amendment and to the original motion. You don't have to have amended motions. You know, we're, you know, staff is just giving you at the time of our, our staff report, uh, you know, the information that we have. And now that we have additional, you can make those, those amendments. And, and if you want, I can kind of walk back through that really quick because I do believe that I heard from both Pete, um, and Scott that, um, all of the concerns that, that were there raised, they have no problem, um, with any of them. Um, so if you want, I can go back and cover that really quick, Kelly.
Yes, yes, do that.
So, so while we still have to have some discussion, um, when we get to the, uh, to the roads, I'll kind of leave that off for us to make an amendment to either approve the road, um, uh, or the, I'm sorry, the parking, um, or to require them to put in the full forty. But the one, uh, the one requirement in your staff report that we would like to have included is the applicant shall provide a copy of all required permits from the central Michigan District Health Department and Isabelle, and the Isabella County Road Commission. Um, the second one that I would like to, uh, have you include is that the plans, um, be amended to include a, uh, a six-foot vinyl fence in the almond or tan, uh, color, um, as opposed to the wood fence that was proposed, uh, which accommodates the caller and the property owner to the north. I would also like to, uh, recommend the amendment to, um, in, uh, to update the plans to include all those structures that are within one hundred feet of the property, show their location and their heights. Uh, the third one was to clarify that language on, uh, um, uh, C one two, um, note seven point one, the lighting where it discusses the reference to Broomfield Township versus Isabella County. Uh, we would just like that clarified and corrected. And then the sign, we would like to, uh, establish a, um, uh, condition there that the, uh, the applicant, uh, shall, uh, um, uh, place, uh, the, the placement of the sign shall be located on the south side of the, uh, proposed driveway. Um, and the, uh, applicant will, um, apply to the zoning administrator for approval of the signs when such time comes. So that covers all those concerns plus the, um, um, uh, recommended condition of the road commission, uh, and health department permits.
Okay, so we've got a summary of the, what we want to have included in the motion. So we need a motion and a second.
Uh, Nayar, I make a motion to approve site plan, uh, twenty dash seventeen as submitted with the, uh, conditions that were, uh, just forementioned by Mr. Nayarport.
All right, do we have a second?
Hello Vogel? I would second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Now it's time for some discussion.
Uh, Nayar, uh, the neighbor, I believe it was Miss Todd, spoke about an eight-foot fence. Request, is that out of reason? I know typically ours is a six-foot requirement. Is there any reason why we can't go eight per their request?
Ray, do you know off the top of your head? I don't, um, whether the ordinance allows for us to go over the, the six foot?
Um, in the ordinance under, um, uh, article three fences and walls, um, which is in the general requirements, um, um, a seven-foot fence is listed as the maximum, um, to my knowledge, and I can run a search in the ordinance real quick. Um, to my knowledge in the commercial district, um, it's not addressed otherwise.
Okay, so, so the issue I would, I would, uh, speak to a little bit with regard to that, Jerry, is that, uh, I don't know that these vinyl fences, um, that are wanted are, are constructed in a, in a seven or an eight-foot fence height. You know, we, we could, uh, you know, we could ask the, the, um, the applicant to, you know, the measurement of the height basically is from ground surface area. Uh, we could ask them to, um, to, you know, berm up a little bit on that side property line, um, and set this fence up on a berm. But, um, a standard six-foot, you know, vinyl fence, um, um, if it's in vinyl is, is I think what you're going to find out there.
All right, I just didn't know, um, just to be neighborly, it might be a good idea for them. I can stick with the six foot there, but just to be neighborly, it might be a good idea for our applicant to maybe consult with the neighbor a little bit and see what they can't do. Uh, I think that the vinyl would be definitely a move in the right direction though.
Any other comments?
Uh, Commissioner Jim Horton, can I?
Yes.
Couple of quick, couple of quick things. I, I echo the, uh, statement in regards to the vinyl versus the wood. I want to, I know the wood is probably more aesthetic looking. The vinyl, I believe, if I'm understanding correctly, the vinyl wants to be installed so there's no way for the child to slip through the, slip through. Is that the reason for the vinyl suggestion? I'm guessing?
Because it never needs to be painted.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, that's fine. And I, you know, over a long term, I don't know how vinyl moves, cracks, bends, you know, whatever, but I'm sure that'll be aesthetically looking out in that area. Um, also too, in regards to the storm retention area, Tim, I know we mentioned about that, the plan does show some storm retention. I'm concerned with the depth of that and/or is there, I know we don't, probably don't require any fencing around or any protection for avoiding people wandering into that. Um, if it's even remotely, you know, I don't know if that even pertains, but that's really about all the thing I can see in regards to the planned site itself. I got a couple of other things, but, um, yeah, I mean, I, that's, I don't know if that's even feasible or not feasible or what, what normal, what normally is done, I guess, with around like a storm, storm retention areas. Is it, I, I know the one over behind off a picker off behind, I think it's behind the hotel. That's not, is that fenced? That is not.
No, that's not fenced. The one out there on Little Field or, um, I'm sorry, Lincoln in like twenty by the McDonald's, that one's, you know, wide open. Um, I ti- I typically see them, um, you know, in large subdivision developments, you'll see, you know, some fencing and some activity on some of those larger ones in those areas. But there's one over by Home Depot in Union Township, or I'm sorry, by, um, uh, Menards over in Union Township. That one is not, uh, fenced in any way.
Mr. Joziaf may have a comment regarding this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we have less than four feet of, um, pounded water, even if the whole thing is topped out. And then in the back where it is the deeper section, we have a, a more gradual slope than what typically we would find in retention basin on the back, in the back only. Though we have a four to one versus you, you normally would just do a three to one. And it's every, if, if a basin has more than, uh, I think it's five feet, then you normally would fence it or put in benches, um, to help, you know, be able to get somebody back out of there again. But not typically in a basin of this size or this, this pattern shape.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
I have one comment on the lighting for the building signs. Um, will this be on twenty-four seven? Um, I'm just thinking about, you know, light blight and, uh, overshadowing onto the additional properties.
Um, just so I don't get it kind of confused, we're not really speaking in regards to the inch because that's not on our application. Um, but all, all lighting on the kind of, on the site itself is timed, so it is not aside for some downlighting for security, just to kind of illuminate a couple of, you know, the doors, things like that. Uh, everything is on a timer where it's usually an after, an hour after close, uh, all but twenty percent of the lighting, um, shuts off. So the light pollution for a full twenty-four hour period is not a situation.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? I guess I did have one comment. There's, there was quite a few of the emails were regarding, do we need another store like this? You know, those kind of comments. I'm not sure from a planning commission standpoint, we really have any say in that. We all, all we can do is take what, take what shows up. If somebody wants to, to, uh, wants to build a business and it's in an approved district, approved for use in that district, that's pretty much what, what we're limited to as far as. Pretty much what, what we're limited to. As far as we're, we don't have any jurisdiction to decide whether or not it needs to be there. Correct in that?
That is correct. You don't get to dictate how many McDonald's are in your, your township or in your, you know, your county area. Um, that, that's just not it. If it's a commercial district and they comply with the requirements of the ordinance. Um, and they get their approval, they get their approval. Um, if they, um, you know, there was, there's an array of reasons and there were an array of reasons, I think, in the applications. Uh, for example, like I said, there, there wasn't enough traffic out there, and then I heard others say there was too much traffic out there. I heard some say that, uh, you know, um, uh, you know, it's gonna put other businesses out of business. Um, you don't have to shop there. You know, there's lots of, there's lots of reasons for all those things, so, um, I think just not addressing, you know, the specific use. Um, uh, or the specific business type is, is not something the planning commission should be involved in.
All right, any other comments?
We do still have to have some discussion with their parking. So they've, they've requested the part, their parking to go from, uh, from forty spaces down to thirty. Uh, you know, here's where I have a little bit of a, of a, of a, of an issue with it. Um, I, I think if that's what the business needs, it's probably not a bad thing. However, they, they indicate to us that they did a national study of their business types, but they haven't told us what that business type is. This is a retail establishment, and so that retail establishment could require forty. Um, we don't know that. Um, they could put in, you know, business A that needs this thirty according to this, and that's what they're getting approval for. But since it's a retail business that we're approving tonight, it could end up with the, the, the business B that ends up going in there. Um, needing forty spaces, so, um, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to reducing the amount of parking if so need be. Um, I'm just concerned now whether the planning commission feels like they've provided you with enough information, uh, to make that, uh, that variance, that waiver.
Is there a, um, is there a size for parking for the size of building?
Yeah.
Nine thousand feet?
Yeah, the ordinance, the ordinance calculates that out. I think they indicated and ran the calculation, uh, right out of our ordinance and it comes up to. To, uh, you know, just under forty and you always round up, so you have forty, I think, parking spaces, uh, for that nine thousand square, or maybe it was just over. I can't remember, but it comes up that forty was the number that was needed. Uh, they're requesting thirty. I, I will say that, um, if you look at the plan, Ray, can you pull up the plan that shows where the additional ten parking spaces would go? Yeah, sorry, um. So I can start talking as he pulls that up, but I believe they indicated to the west, the parking in front of the building to the west, you can see down here. They were adding some area down there to get the four additional parking spaces in. And then the other six would be added up in some grassed area up there by the retention pond. Um, you know, the issue that you come into with, with those is, is now you got headlights pointing right into a residential use. Um, you know, to, to, to the north. I think they've done a relatively good job of avoiding, uh, maneuvering within the, um, um, uh, onsite maneuvering for vehicles. Um, to avoid, uh, you know, lights in that, uh, um, vehicle lights and those kinds of things into the, um, the house to the north. And keep in mind that that house to the north is still in the same district and is a non-conforming use, but it is still a home that people are living in, so. I, I, you know, the, the, the putting the parking up in that, that, uh, part area by the, by the retention pond is probably not the best location. If you're gonna require them to go with the forty. Yeah, that's just my perspective of it.
So it, what's, what's the downside to only having thirty parking spots? I mean, who, who, what's the penalty? It's the, the people that have the, the retail business end up being short of parking spots, so people go elsewhere because they can't find a parking spot. Is there, from a planning standpoint, is there, is there other downsides that hurt anybody besides the, the business owner if there's not enough parking?
Well, I think the avoidance of people parking in grassed areas or people parking on the road. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure I've ever seen, um, you know, a retail establishment like this have part, you know. People parking out on the road. I, I think the, the bigger issue would be, um, that people would just move right down the road to it, to another business if that parking lot is. Is full and packed. I'm sure the applicant would love for that parking lot to be full and packed all the time. Um, we just, you know, the, the question that I had for the planning commission is, do you feel like they've provided you? There was a letter in your packet. Um, and do you feel like they provided you with enough information there, um, to, to warrant, uh, that, that variance of going down? Um, to the thirty, and I believe this is what, this is the way the ordinance reads, if I can. Come across it here really quick, I had it up. Uh, the zoning manager, uh, this is, uh, see required parking facilities, the zoning administrators shall determine the minimum number of parking spaces required. For accessory off-street parking by applying the schedule of parking requirements for the various uses. And any other applicable provisions of this ordinance, where the computation results in a fractional space, it should be counted as one additional space required. The planning commission may vary from the parking requirements of this article, where it finds that due to the nature of the particular use. Said requirements will not be adequate to provide sufficient parking, or where the strict application of the requirements will result. In an excess amount of parking related to the particular use, and that, and that's where you would be granting them this, this variance to kind of come down in the number. Um, because the strict application of the requirements requires forty. Um, and, and that is a result in an excess amount of parking related to the use. And that's the area where you guys get to determine whether they gave you enough information on. You, you, you could do something less than that as well. I mean, you could always approve that, uh, ask them to put the four out front. To get you closer to the thirty-four and still avoid those six, so you don't have the issue of the lights to the north. Um, you can require it at the forty. It's, it's really on, on you guys what you decide you really want to do there.
I think the lights, the lights pointing to the north is, is a, a real concern, I think, for the people that are living beside, beside this. I, I, I could be, I would think not having cars parking there would be an advantage, and I. Care less about the other ones on the other side, maybe you should hold those, I'd be all right with that.
Yeah, I would, uh, Tim, or Chairman Bean, if I could speak. Real, real quick, I, I, in looking at this, they can't do any really thing to the, they, they got the four parking spaces for depiction only, they got the four ma- mapped out. And the one, obviously they can't go to the east of that because I believe that's where their, uh. Uh, well, and their septic is, so obviously they can't put any parking on that side, on, on the south side of, of that property. Uh, and going to the other one, I see they have a six spots, and that's probably Kelly, or someone's talking about the lighting. Um, I'm comfortable in the fact of proving thirty, thirty parking spaces as planned. Um, I would like to see the approving for forty, but allowing thirty and allowing the six and four. I think it's important if you're, you know, if they've got room to make them accountable in case that is a need. And not just saying you only need thirty. I think, I think we can hold, I would say kind of a hybrid, uh, require the forty spaces. But only require development of thirty with an option of four and six. Uh, I'd be in favor of something like that. I think giving, when, when there's room to do it and saying, well, we don't want to do it, or we shouldn't have to do it. When our, or maybe, maybe I'm misreading, maybe I'm misinterpreting, but that's what I'm seeing here. That we got four and six equals forty if you add it to the thirty already existing in the plan. Um, I'd be comfortable in doing that and not having necessarily, as long as you have plans and future development approved. Um, I guess that's, or maybe it's already in the site plan, I don't know, so.
I, I'm just curious, I'm just curious really quick, Commissioner Horton, what you mean by, uh, like, like the hybrid, like approve the forty or approve the thirty, but. Have the, have the, um, option for forty, when would we opt that option? You mean like if another use came in type of thing?
Well, or, or, you know, if, or, you know, it, it might, is, is my understanding, you said it's basically by, by a formula of that size square footage. They're to have forty parking spaces, is that correct?
That is correct.
But in this case, they're asking to put thirty parking spaces, and I'm saying, you know, looking at this and how it's designed and some of the, what they have to do with the building, obviously, they're not. In an area where they have, um, water, where they have, um, municipal water and municipal septic or sewer. They have to count for that in their property, so it's kind of a unique situation, uh, because they have to count for that. And they have to dig a well, and they also have to create a, a septic field, so they're taking spaces away in that regards. So, but they're still accounting in their plans for forty spaces, they're just not developing forty spaces.
So if I hear you correctly, you're, you're improved, you're, you're okay with the waiver to go to the thirty?
I don't know if I say it's a, I don't know if I say it's a waiver. I would, I would say that if called upon, they have to account for that. Or if, if traffic is such and they have people not parking in spaces, or, you know, people could park in one area and shine their lights in. To the neighbor's property, but they have plans to put it further back down, uh, they have to go to those plans. I don't know, maybe there's some stipulation, or. We may can do forty, I don't know, or make them only do thirty and waiver. I, I kind of indifferent on, I'm just, I'm just looking at the site and it is you kind of unique. Not unique in this area because we deal with rural development all the time, but. They're, in regards to why, how their kind of site developed, or site limited because of the fact that there's a septic field they have to put in. And there's also a well that they have to dig, it's not municipal, so that's all I'm saying.
Also, keep in mind that, that, that's their design, that parcel is much bigger to the back. They could, they could move this thing back and probably accommodate the forty without any problem. Um, this is just their design that they've come up with that they're requesting at the time, and it does look like the applicant is looking for some. Some comment or question here, Chairman?
Good, go ahead, Scott.
Sorry, yes, thanks, thank you. Um, again, I, I don't really feel like it's a, uh, this is a request that we're trying to get out of doing something. I, I feel like it's a, it's more of a request as an environmental aspect that, you know, we haven't justified the need for forty parking spaces. We've routinely found the need for thirty, and even thirty is an excess, you know, uh, I always go back to. We don't design a, a shopping center for the day after Thanksgiving in a typical year. But, um, but we, you know, we've never had a situation where we've been overloaded or overwhelmed with, um, cars in, in any of our parking lots. So, so from that respect. Um, I really want to keep this as an, as an environmental thing, you know, us plowing an additional. What did I tell you? I put the numbers, I think, in that application there with, or the exhibit rather, um. You know, the, the numbers, you know, if you, I think it's. Twenty-five hundred square feet of hard, hard surface, so, so twenty-five hundred har- square feet of hard surface, and then twenty-five hundred square feet of vegetation. That we take out of the equation. Um, as I indicated too. If the, if the business warranted it, we would build a hundred parking spaces on this site. We would build, we would want to build, we'd be fighting you for more parking, so, um, we, we just, that. That volume of traffic just does not exist for, for this use. We are in a position where we can reserve that space, um, you know, in the, in the rare circumstance that this building becomes occupied by somebody else. That would either come under a change of use possibly, uh, all those facets that you guys would have another shot at it, uh, you know, get some additional parking put back in, so. We're, again, we're, we're not, we're not penny pinching, and that's not this, that's not what this program's all about. It, it's more about taking two thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet, that's a house and a half of, or a house of, um. Uh, stormwater off of a load of, you know, the, I mean, we've all seen a lot of rain this year, so I mean. As a dis- as a drainage district, I mean, that adds up, you know, if you can do that over and over again, so. Um, I think the, one last thing I'm gonna say is that your ordinance and the parking requirements. Those are a barometer and those, um, shouldn't have to dictate how much square footage of asphalt you need to put down for a particular use. I think everybody has a, has a, has their business model, and, um, we don't all need to. Um, you know, those are suggestions, you have the opportunity, and that's why we're here to, to make some concessions if, if. Like I said, we'll build a hundred parking spaces if, if that's how many people are coming through the doors, because that's wonderful, but that's not reality.
I have another question on parking. Uh, also, I noticed on the plan that there's only two handicap spots. Is there anything in our zoning that require more than that? I mean, you don't go to some places, you see way more than two, uh, especially those two are just on the right left of the. Of the unparalleled spot there, I mean, I don't know.
The ADA requirements under the building code and the ADA requirements are gonna require and dictate how many they have, I believe two is the number under that for this size structure.
Okay, 'cause I do know to the north, about a mile up, there is an assisted living, not assisted living, there's a group home up there. Uh, I know there's some assisted livings in the area, uh, along with, uh, Lake Isabella, there's some retirees out there. Um, so, again, but again, if it's only required, I was just looking at, there's only two. Um, so you go to someplace, you just see quite a bit more than that, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's all, that's only, it's only my, as just a question that I can, you know, more than anything, so.
Chairman Bean, I did hear, I believe the applicant indicate that they would, uh, they would be willing to, um, uh, you know, set aside those ten parking spaces. So I think what I heard Commissioner Horton saying was. You know, thirty's, thirty's probably fine, but we can reserve those, those other ten spaces in those locations for those ten spaces. Uh, for future parking if there is a use change, so, um, you know, in your condition here, if you wanted to provide for that, that sort of. Waiver in that, uh, parking to come down to thirty, um, uh, you know, thirty that is constructed for, um, at time of occupancy for the, for the building. Um, but we reserve, um, the spaces that are identified on the site plan for the full thor- forty. And at such time that, um, their, their parking lots are full and over capacity. And or at such times where there's a use change, uh, we could then require them to, uh, or, or require, then we could have another crack at it. As Scott put it, uh, to require those ten spaces to be put in at that time.
Would, would a use change require ano- another set of permits, so you would ha- you would have an, another chance to look at? At parking without having a stipulation in a, in a motion? It's just a little bit redundant. If it, if it's gonna have, if the use change is gonna have to come, come before the planning commission again, why, why have it included in the amendment?
Yeah, a use change. I, I believe our ordinance requires all use changes as well to come through the site plan process, so you would have another crack at it. Um.
So the only reason would be if, if the parking lot happens to be full all the time, but if. If their parking lot happens to be full and there's people parking on the grass or parking lot on the road, that becomes a public safety issue and. It could be addressed by, by staff probably without having to.
Well, no, the sheriff, the sheriff's gonna throw it back at us, and we're gonna, and we're gonna basically say that we're only approved to have thirty parking spaces there, um, so, so.
Right, but then, so, so at that point, then you'd have to expand your parking lot for the ex- for the extra, because there's more, there's more requirement. Or they would have.
Yep, that's. That's feasible, yep.
I, I mean, all I'm saying is, we can put a stuff, a bunch of stuff in the ordinance that doesn't even need to be there, if, if this becomes a problem. We, we already have the, the, this, the, the things in place, protocols in place to handle it. Without having, without changing a, a men- amendment in the ordinance, I think.
Yeah, you know, staff is fine either way, whichever way you go. I was just kind of leaning off of what Commissioner Horton, where Commissioner Horton was headed there.
Yeah, I, I, what I see is happening though is, is, is if you approve, if it, if it's scheduled for forty based on the square footage. And you approve thirty, what's to stop the, again, every site is different, I realize that. What are you looking now and into making, the next person's gonna say, well, I don't want to have forty, I can go thirty-two. And. I don't know, I just, like I said, I, that's why I was trying to look for like a compromise to allow it to fit into what our schedule is. But not necessarily have them be so rigid with it, so.
I, I think that's where the applicant is trying to, trying to, uh, talk about, you know, sticking with the environmental aspect here, because. Not every site's gonna have some environmental conditions potentially, um, that are there. Others may want it, um, you know, because they can't afford it. Um, you know, that's not the situation that they're asking for the reduction, um, they're asking for it to maintain, uh, you know, that vegetative area. Um, and, um, uh, uh, you know, minimize that, that flooding in that area per se, or to minimize the impervious surface that would be out in that area. By, by the equivalent of a, of a single-family residential home and a garage.
And that also, that, that makes it unique then, so, um, that's fine, I, I could do that too, as long as you can differentiate the uniqueness of it, so.
I believe that the thirty would be fine. Um, of course, no one wants anyone parking on their grass. Um, you don't want it turned into a farm field, people driving across it, so. Um, I would see where the thirty's totally fine.
Okay, so. Have we pretty much got the, the parking? So it sits on the parking, what, how does the amendment read right now, Tim? Where thirty spaces or we, or it's still open and it has to be included in the amendment?
It's still wide open, but in our ordinance, actually, we, we do not require, so our ordinance says all new, you know, this is, um. Uh, uses requiring site plan approval, all new commercial and industrial uses, except for those provided in section eleven oh two B, and eleven oh two B two is. And eleven oh two B two is a change of use that does not result in a change of the building footprint or parking requirements. So, so, you know, you know, thinking about that, if another use came in, um, you would be, you would be saying that um, they they may come to us and argue, hey, we don't have to come in front of you for a site plan because we don't want to change the parking requirements. We want to keep it at thirty because that's the amount you gave for the square footage of this building. They're indicating to you that they're wanting less because their business doesn't need forty. Um, and that's, that's where I would rather have this thing stipulated or conditioned, um, than leaving it wide open and just for the next one to roll in on us.
So so can, so can we do like to to, uh, Mr. Horton's claim, can we have thirty spaces is fine, but these ten are are reserved? You know, you don't have to use them now unless unless at later time, these ten are required, then.
You you the planning commission would go ahead and approve their thirty, uh, the utilization of thirty of the forty parking spaces, a development of thirty of the forty parking spaces uh, for this specific use at this time, in the event that they have a need for those additional ten, or there is a use change uh, that that shall be, the parking shall be reconsidered by the planning commission at that time. Therefore, we have the ability that there is going to potentially be a change in parking there, so we bring them back in front of you to try to get them to put their ten in.
That sounds like a good plan. All right.
So that was not included, so that would need to be an amendment to the original um, um, motion.
Okay. All right. So so we're going to need a motion for this amendment and a second.
Correct, and then a vote, and then a vote back to the original.
Right.
Okay. Well, yeah, a vote on this amend, vote, motion in a second. That'll, well, that that'll, that'll put, we don't have to vote on this piece. You just motion in a second to get it included with the with with the existing motion. Or do we have to do a separate vote?
A motion in a second, and then you'd vote, and then if it was approved, it would be added to the original motion, and then we would take a a a a vote on that first motion.
I I'd like to make a motion, if I could say this correctly, because Tim and Kelly, I think you both said it better than I did. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we amend to stipulate a approval of a plan for forty spaces, but only having to put in thirty active spaces or something to that effect. Uh, what's the exact terminology I want to use?
So do there, there forty parking spaces are required, but development of thirty um, at this time?
I would like to have a stipulate that we have forty required spaces in the site plan, but only that thirty be developed in the site plan. Is that, is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Back in, Nyer.
All right, so we got a motion in a second. Ray, if we could have a vote, please.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Commissioner Nyer.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Silker.
Yes.
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion passed eight to zero.
Okay, so now that's added, that's added to our original motion. Any other discussion that we need to have about the original motion with?
So the original motion, just for clarification, the original motion is going to include the requirements for copies of the Central Michigan District Health Department Road Commission. Um, the vinyl fence, um, uh, as as discussed earlier and in included in the motion, the amended plans for the uh, uh, for the location and height of the structures. Um, the amended plans for the uh, language under seven point one on page C one two, um, where the reference was to Broome Field Township to the county, and that the sign be placed on the south side of the driveway and future application be made um, to the zoning administrator for for a sign.
Okay.
And the parking, if I didn't add that right there, I may have lost track of the parking.
All right. All right. So any any more discussion?
The only one other, the only discussion is basically a compliment to you, Chairman Bean, is that I echo what you stated in regards to the approval of this um, type of retail business. Um, again, you 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 can emphasize what people, or you sympathize what people are saying, but I think it's outside our perusal as a planning commission to, you know, decide other than what's in our in our um, zoning, zoning issues, I think. Take it further than that. Again, the the community itself in that area can dictate whether that business succeeds or fails. Um, so I I agree, I echo everything you said in what you stated earlier.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess it's time for a vote, right?
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Commissioner Silker.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Nyer.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody. Enjoy your evening and happy holidays.
Thank you. Thanks, Rick. Thanks for everything. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving it on to Union Township map amendment.
Yeah, this is a map amendment that we received uh, back on November nineteenth. Um, it it came from Union Township, uh, Community Development, Community and Economic Development Director Rodney Nanny. Um, their planning commission has um, moved forward to rezone a parcel that is split zoned. Uh, the parcel, I believe, is over in the southwest corner of Isabella and Broome Field Road. Uh, it's currently zoned partially B four, B five. Uh, they're looking to um, clean that up and uh, um, rezone the B four portion to B five, so the entire parcel is B five. Uh, we see no problems with it. We see no issues with it. Um, and we will reach back out to uh, Union Township if you have no uh, uh, concerns.
All right. Any questions for staff regarding this?
So.
All right, so put that one to red. Okay, moving on to item ten, public comment, and one minute, please. Okay. Public comment portion, so is there any, there's anybody that um, that's listening that wants to have some comments, star, I believe, star nine on your phone, and Ray will let you in, state your name and make your comment.
We do have one individual with the last three digits of seven, eight, zero in their phone number for public comment. You can go ahead and unmute yourself by pressing star six on your phone for your public comment.
Good evening. Thanks. Uh, this is Tim Wolf again, calling from Broome Field Township. Wanted to thank uh, the staff in the planning commission for the consideration of my comments submitted earlier. Um, I would respectfully take issue with the attitude, though, that because a project necessarily complies with the ordinance, the planning commission's hands are tied to approve it. You are the planning commission for the county, and as I have done this for years, I I used to prescribe to that attitude. And the more I've done it, I've really come to see that that attitude is harmful for developing and building community. That when you have small businesses like, uh, the gentleman who spoke after me in the first comment period, you know, that this would hurt his small business. Um, this type of attitude does not encourage entrepreneurship. It doesn't encourage residents to to take investment in their community because it doesn't show that their local government will stand up for them and say, you know what? There's been a business who's done everything we've ever asked for. They've donated to Little League. They've been a good member of our community. And when something comes forward, we're not going to give it a second look because that's just what our ordinance says. I would encourage you guys to do better with regard to that. Um, thank you for uh, your consideration and everything tonight, and uh, wish you guys to have holidays.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's no other uh, public on the call.
All right, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. So let's talk about staff comments, item number eleven.
Staff does not have any additional comments tonight, other than happy holidays.
Okay, planning commissioner, excuse me, planning commissioner comments. Um, da, 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 Nathan, any comments?
Is there still another special meeting next week?
There is a special meeting still next Thursday on the seventeenth. Uh, we have packet. Uh, we will be probably sending that stuff out tomorrow morning. We got to it a little bit today. Um, and we'll finish it up and get uh, digital packets out to you uh, before the end of the the business day tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Campbell.
All set. Happy holidays.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Horton.
I have nothing. No. Oh, one other, sorry, sorry about having to disrupt the meeting a couple of times to change locations and rooms. Uh, and I got this big fluffy back chair because I had to go into my bedroom here and get situated. So it's not look, it looks like I'm comfortable. This, I can't believe that the size of this chair looks like in the video. So I didn't anticipate doing this move, so. So that's that's all I have to say.
All right, Commissioner O'Neal, any comments?
I will withhold my holiday greetings until after the seventeen, okay?
Got it. All right, Commissioner Vogel.
Um, nothing to add. I'm uh, got a nice hard wood chair here. That sure looks comfy, Jim.
You should wait.
So, there you go. So.
All right, Commissioner Silker, any comments?
No, not tonight.
Okay, and Mr. Nyer.
Uh, just apologize for having them miss the last couple of meetings there. Everything sort of piled up, and I couldn't get out of a couple others.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have any, I have no comments either. So at this point, um, look for a motion to adjourn?
You know what? You can just, the chair can call the adjournment of the meeting. We don't have to get a motion and go through a roll call vote.
Oh, hey, that's.
Chair can actually call a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, well, I I motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, guys. All right. See you everybody next week.
Okay.